All right. So we'll call the meeting to order at six oh two and Stephanie, can you take attendance?
Becky Bysel.
Present.
Ryan Davis, was he able to log in? Okay. My understanding, he should be logging in shortly. Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hedin.
Here.
Dave Pembel.
Here.
Stephanie Maum here and Kelsey Witz.
Here. All right. So first up is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the April twenty eighth board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some more.
Some more. Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Right. So we have a recognition of visitors. So I just want to thank everyone who's watching from home or on Facebook and of course, everyone who has joined us on our Zoom meeting tonight. To present us good news and we're excited to hear from you and look forward to it. So first up, then after that will be our announcements and recognition.
All right. Well, I have a ton of guests here for you because it is that time of the year and semester where we want to take a moment to acknowledge. The great work of our staff through our employee of the semester and employee of the year work. And so I'm just going to read a little bit of each one of the folks that are on with you. So you can hear a little bit of why they've been. Recognized. So first up is Casey Carlson. She is actually a substitute teacher over at Tilden. Casey became a substitute early in the early childhood program this year, and to say she has been a godsend is an understatement. Not only can she sub in multiple programs, she has been ready and willing almost every time she's asked to come in. Her flexibility is so appreciated. She has been at Tilden so much this year. She feels like part of the early childhood team. So Casey Carlson, congratulations. We have Todd Leboz, who is our infamous ALC director and teacher. And this year has been obviously challenging. Todd has met each new challenge with steadfast leadership and positivity at the Hastings area learning center. He has sought guidance from all stakeholders at the ALC before each critical decision. He's devoted to ensuring that our most at-risk students in this district continue to feel connected to school and their teachers regardless of the learning model. In addition to his teaching or directing roles at the ALC, Todd has organized and implemented our online credit recovery program for night school students, which has taken on increased importance during these COVID times. Throughout this, he has continued to coach our student athletes in track and field and football. Congratulations, Todd. Next up Rochelle Nielsen at the high school. Rochelle is an amazing teacher and colleague. She goes out of her way to really get to know her students and make personal connections with them. She's constantly seeking new information to make her classes fun and relevant. Rochelle works very hard. She's the co-chair of the global languages department. She's on numerous committees, the calendar committee, the advisory team committee, site leadership, just to name a few. And yet she will be the first to ask another colleague how she can help if they are struggling in any way. Hastings High School is lucky to have a teacher like Rochelle. Congratulations Rochelle. Steve Peterson, also at our high school. Steve is a positive and supportive staff member who is always willing to help. He brings an upbeat attitude to the job and always puts students first. Steve is an extraordinary counselor that is ceaseless in his pursuit of improving opportunities for all students at Hastings High School. This year alone, he has made connections with colleges, opening the door for students to earn college credit in elective classes and has sought to bring back other opportunities such as FFA. Steve's skills in seeking opportunities and bringing that opportunity to our community has benefited students and teaching staff alike. Congratulations, Steve. And then also coming from the high school, Jesse Holm. Jesse has Jesse takes the time to know our students individually and cares about each one of them. She's able to put this together with her extensive knowledge of the standards. And learning processes to create fun learning and awesome relationships in her classroom. She's also a great cheerleader for her coworkers and cares about each one of them. Congratulations, Jesse. Then last but not least, in the employee of the semester category is our soon retiring Paul White. Who also comes from the high school. In these difficult times filled with turmoil, one of the constants all year has been that Paul White has always been there for both students and staff. He has supported teachers and staff and trying to find new ways to meet student needs and led us through numerous revisions to school lunch schedules, student schedules and other conflicts. Through all of the commotion and chaos, he has always had a clear and consistent message that we need to work together and find ways for all students to learn to be the best of their potential. He asks us questions about how we are doing and truly wants to know. He praises people for coming up with new ideas that are trying to reach students in different ways. Simply put. He is the best assistant principal I have ever worked with. So congratulations to our semest- our employees of the semester. Then we also have Ms. Shannon Stenzel, who is on the call with us, who was selected as this year's employee of the year. So just a reminder that employee of the semester and employee of the year. We take nominations for employees of the semester, for in first semester and in second semester. And then from those folks. The employee of the year is voted on by staff as well. And this year's Shannon Stenzel has been selected as our employee of the year. One of the write-ups from Shan- for Shannon was Shannon works through adversity and goes above and beyond to make our special education department here at Hastings Middle School thrive and work so well. She is the best department lead. She always, she is always willing to help anyone and always has the time to listen to an issue and work through it with us. We as a department are so lucky to have Shannon as our department lead and colleague. Thank you, Shannon Stenzel and congratulations. And again, congratulations to all of you. I'll open it back up to the board and chair weights if there are questions or comments, but this is one of the great nights. It's one of those. Moments of awesomeness, Scott, that we have in our district.
Yeah. Congratulations to all of you on here tonight. And thank you so much for just everything you do for the district and for students. And I'll just open it up for all the board members if they have anything they'd like to add. Scott?
Just echoing your comments, Kelsey. Just thank you. Some of you I know better than others, both inside and outside of school settings. And it has been an absolute pleasure. Getting to know each one of you. And thank you so much for everything that you've done for our students. It is what you do that makes Hastings awesome. This is what makes the school go. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And for those of you not retiring, keep it up. For those of you retiring, you're going to get six Saturdays in your, in your week.
Effy.
Scott took the words right out of my mouth too. Yeah. Enjoy retirement. It is well deserved and congratulations to everybody. This, this past year, year and a half has been very trying. So kudos to everybody for all the extra effort. It is very much recognized. That, that you put so much into making everything so successful for our kiddos. Congratulations, everybody.
Becky?
I was going to say, whatever they also say, congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. For the impacts that you've done on my children and all the other students. And we enjoy retirement and the next year to come. For the ones that are coming back. So thank you.
All right. Lisa, did I see you as well?
Yes. Thank you, Kelsey. I just want to point out, and this to me is the most powerful thing about the employee of the semester and the employee of the year. This is based on your colleagues' recommendations and nominations. This is work that is recognized and seen by the people that you're with every day. And while you may not be in a position where you feel like, yep, I'm leading, you're leading and you have led. And, and the positive impact that you have had on the staff around you is seen and recognized and acknowledged. Thank you so very much.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. Thank you, Lisa. Well, thank you for joining us on here tonight. And again, like everyone said, thank you just so much for everything. You are assets to our district and without you, you know, we would not be, be the district that we are. And so thank you for, for all of your hard work and your commitment to our students.
Thank you for the couple of minutes taking time with us tonight. So, so that we could recognize the work that you do. Much appreciated.
Right. Well, with that, you are all welcome to stay on here for the whole board meeting if you're interested, but I assume not. So I hope you have a wonderful night and congratulations again. So next up, we have our items for discussion with a couple of policies set for the first reading tonight. Beginning with policy four oh six, the public and private personnel data. So are there any questions or comments on this policy?
I, my quick question, my quick question, because I didn't see a lot of markup on this, is this just about providing new information on the point of contact? For the rising employee? Primarily, was that the most substantive change?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Otherwise, we can move this one on for our second reading next month. All right. So our second policy to go over for the first reading is the employee recognition compensation. And so this is one that we've talked about in a couple of meetings and. At our last meeting, Kathy had let us know that she had kind of checked in with Kevin Ruff regarding whether it was okay to not have everything explicitly written out. And we had gotten the go-ahead. And so this is really just making it. More flexible for the district and determining, you know, what compensation we'll do each year to recognize employees. So are there any questions or comments about this, things you want to send back to the policy committee? Any concerns about? Kind of the new layout or anything like that? Lisa?
Just, just from a process perspective, my read on this then is that. As a regular practice in, say, August, sometime before the school year starts. Employee recognition would be an item on the board agenda. And it would set the date of recognition and the. And the recognition items. Because it leaves it to be decided each year by the board.
And the biggest thing that we learned with that, it may not, we may not set the date every year, but what we learned in talking with legal on this one is that. The school board really has the opportunity to set the limits every year of what we want to do.
So it's limit setting, not specific item setting.
Yeah, it could, and it could be if, as a board, if you decided, yeah, we want to decide right now, here's what we're doing. But the board wouldn't have to, and this allows that flexibility for that. But you are correct in that the change will be operationally every year, we're going to have to have sometime in the fall. Some type of a discussion about where do we want to, how much do we want to allocate to this?
Thank you. I think that's appropriate. I really like this solution.
Yeah. And that gives us some flexibility with the items we have already. You know, we still have some of the items we've given out in the past. Kind of put in a storage area. And so we have some of that we can do. We can open some new items, things like that. So. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'm not seeing any. So we'll see that as a second reading then next month. So the last policy to look at tonight is the equity and diversity policy for a third reading. So we've had a lot of discussion about this one. But if there is anything else that people would like to discuss. Scott?
Just to thank you for the document cleanup. Oxford commas all over everywhere. I love it. So thank you.
I think the Supreme Court said you need the Oxford comma.
Well, it, it just makes it much more readable and, and yeah, cleaned it up nicely. So thank you for that. The content was solid the last time.
All right. Anything else? All right. So because this one is a third reading, if there's a motion, we can move this to an action item tonight.
So move.
Some more seconds.
Okay. All those, well, I'll say any more discussion? All right. All those in favor of moving it to an action item, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So we'll see that one a bit later. All right. Moving into administrative reports.
All right. I'll start off just with a quick update on kind of where we are with some things. The first of which being just a quick update on strategic planning. As of last week, we completed all of our staff meetings. As part of the strategic planning process and depending upon the staff member, people have committed anywhere from three to 26 hours of time that they've put into. Working through this process with Teamwork International. And in addition, just a reminder that we've had over 1,400 participants in our survey and focus groups comprised of parents, staff and students. We said between now and June ninth, we will be compiling all the information we have so far and having it ready for the school board. Who will be looking at all of our strategic planning documents to this point on June ninth and then on June sixteenth. Because as a board, you'll be putting together that district vision and the district roadmap as well as your three-year working plan. So strategic planning is coming along very nicely. One additional thing we are putting out as a recommendation from our community engagement committee is a survey that actually went live as of yesterday. And it really is a two-question survey asking our community, what do they value most about the school district as part of the community? And if there's anything additional that they would like the school district to provide in terms of value to the community. So more of a conceptual question, just about from an organization standpoint. What does the, what does the school district provide as value as part of the community? And then the big topic right now, of course, is all these end of year celebrations that's going on. So in addition to all our all-staff appreciation week last week and our senior awards night. And our first graduating class of avid students. That were celebrated this week, a lot with that avid family night. We have a lot of celebrations that are taking place at many different levels between now and June fourth. Our year of service awards have been delivered to our buildings. And so those have started to become distributed as our buildings have their staff meetings between now and the end of the school year. And today I noticed the senior banners were coming down off of Schaefer Field. They've been up for about a week now. That was a pretty cool sight. Schaefer Field works really cool to just. Provide kind of a walking montage of all the seniors and their larger-than-life pictures. And then we have our senior parade that takes place this Friday at the high school between ten thirty and twelve thirty. Next week, the three elementary schools, depending upon the grade level, have a variety of celebrations on any given day of the week. And they'll be outside whenever possible. So those things are going on. People would know from their individual buildings what exactly the details are for those sites. June first, we are planning to honor our retirees with the parade route, much like last year. That'll be at four o'clock on June first. The middle school will hold its eighth grade celebration on June fourth. The open house celebration will take place at the middle school track and run from eight thirty in the morning until ten thirty in the morning. And then on June fourth at seven PM, we'll have the 2021 commencement of the 151st graduating class of Hastings High School, and it will be at Todd Field. We have three times set aside. We'll be watching the weather very closely. And if things look like they're not going to work out, we've got Thursday at seven PM set aside, or we've got. Then Friday, and then in addition, we've got Saturday in the afternoon set aside. So we'll be watching. For any type of rain that might be coming through and we may have to switch, but our goal is to do whatever it takes to have that graduation take place on Todd Field. So that's the plan. And for people who can't make it. It'll be telecast on HCTV through the Facebook page, but also just a reminder that because of the lifting of the mask restrictions, we don't have any type of. Tickets or anything like that, that we have to be aware of. So it's open to those folks that want to be a part of that ceremony. At Todd Field. So with that, I'll take questions or things that I didn't cover. I wanted to keep it kind of short and sweet just because that's kind of the focus right now is celebrating the end of the year and everything that we've got going on.
Does anyone have any questions or anything they'd like some more information on? Becky?
Just what time to be there on the fourth?
Oh, what time to be there on the fourth?
Across the school board numbers, yes.
That is a great question. I will make sure. I think it is six forty-five or.
Yeah, it's usually a little bit earlier than that. So Becky, for the, for the new folks, because we didn't really have this last year.
Well, we had a parade last year.
Yeah, right, right, right. So typically we meet. At the Lutheran church that is up the hill from, so we meet there. Typically, we have a room that we're able to go into. Where we talk about the logistics of how we're going to handle. Who's handing out, you know, what program or who's handing out the diplomas, who's feeding the diplomas to the person handing them out? How we divide, divide that up, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes board members have, have people that they would like to give, I don't know, maybe Lisa would have someone this year that she'd like to give a diploma to.
We're not giving diplomas.
This is all different though this year.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right. These are going to be.
We're not handing out diplomas and we're not handing out.
Yeah, that's right.
Awards, you know, academic awards. So. I think all we, my understanding, and I feel like I saw this in an email from Mike Johnson, was six forty-five at the arch of the. Field and then the class will meet us and we'll walk in and go onto the stage.
Right.
And they'll walk in and take their seats.
Well, there, yep, that would make sense. You're right. They're picked, they're getting all this stuff in boxes.
No bathrooms at the church. So use the bathroom at home before you come. Saying. Come prepared.
All right. And Stephanie, did you have more to add or was it the same?
It was the exact same thing. Six forty-five at the, at the front gate there.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, guys, for the, I was off track on that. I was maybe yearning for past years.
Right. Now we can discuss, you know, one of the suggestions that Mike had was that we still rotate a school board member standing up to congratulate kids as they walk across the stage. So we can still discuss how we'd like to divide that up. So there is still something. It's just not handing out the diplomas this year. All right. Anything else? Let's see. Okay. Well, then are we good to move on to the building construction fund?
Yep. If we're ready, we'll move right down the line. Building construction, Jen Super has popped up on the screen.
Hi there. So for the building construction fund, we do have several updates for this month. The Pinecrest partial roof replacement project has moved to complete. In process, the Kennedy deferred maintenance project is in there. And then for in design, we have two projects. The first one is the middle school track. And that one at this point has a zero budget assigned to it because there hasn't been a final decision, but there needed to be some survey work on that. And it was about $4,000. So that's in there right now. And then also in design is the high school privacy improvements. And then based on our last facilities meeting, there were some new projects that the facilities committee approved, but we'll get the broader board approval tonight. So those are the boardroom renovations, the entrance security improvements, the middle school improvements for the bathrooms and the high school improvements for the bathrooms. Those each get additional dollars. District office renovation. And then previously approved was the middle school storage building as well as the high school tennis courts. So all of those updates have been included in this report. It now puts kind of that available money to about 2.7 million, assuming that everything gets approved later on tonight. And if by chance they don't, I'll just make those adjustments. Any questions?
Um, just real quick, I had a question. I am, I was just wasn't clear. Has the assessment of the middle school track been completed? Has that analysis been done? Or is that something that's pending? I was a little confused on that piece.
Yeah. So there was one piece of it that has already been done. It was just like an assessment of the conditions. So that was about $4,000 that we paid to have that surveying done.
I see. And no recommendation as of yet.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Lisa, as Chair of the Facilities Committee, will kind of give an update on that when we get to that part of the meeting. So.
Yeah.
It's just, this is just a teaser. All right. Any other questions for Jen? All right. I'm not seeing any. So we can move into student enrollment.
And just a quick update on that. There was an increase of about 20 kids from April one. So that is good news. I think with the change in learning model, we were able to bring back a few kids there. So. Good news on that one.
So as a clarifying question, then, were these kids who had chosen to leave the district because of learning model and then they came back once we were in person?
It could be. So I don't have the exact breakdown, but some of them we know are related to that. Some of them could be in families.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions about the student enrollment? All right. And let's just keep chugging along. Summer food program.
So we'll bring Brittany up for that one. There she is.
Hello. Can everybody hear me? Okay? Okay, good. All right. Is it? I'm assuming you guys have the flyer that was sent out. So I just wanted to go over the summer food program. The flyer kind of shows what we're looking at doing. We have been. Able to get special federal funding from USDA. So all kids again this year, 18 years old and under will eat free, both at school and at home, which will be kind of nice. We have a couple of different options for families to be able to find meals. We're going to do a twice per week, Monday and Wednesday. At all the different locations that are listed there. I was able to get all of the school, just, you know, all the different buildings in the district. And then I also reached out to the city to see if we could do Lake Isabel Park. So we'll be able to go to all those different locations. And then once per week, we're going to do a Monday meal kit, which will be, consist of five breakfasts and five lunches. I am asking for families to sign up for that one, but we will also be able to go to all those different locations. I've been able to partner with some of them that we've done in the past. And then there's a couple. One in Hampton, St. Matthias and Weiderholz in Meesville. That we have new, because I wanted to try to make sure that we were able to get out to as many of the different areas of the district as possible. So that's pretty much kind of what we're doing this summer. I've gotten approval from the DE for all those different locations to be good for us to go.
And then we'll also include all of that in the next Raider update. So people have access to all the details.
Fantastic. Thank you. I love the number of locations you've set up for the meal pickup.
I tried, I tried to really get diversified. I mean, there's so many different areas. So I wanted to make sure that we were able to get as many areas as possible. So hopefully we can hit as many kids as possible that need meals this summer. So.
Yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. So thank you very, very much for sharing that. Not seeing any. So thank you very, very much for sharing that update with us and kind of going over all of that and for all of your hard work with us. And I'm glad the, the meal program's continuing this summer.
Thanks.
All right. So moving into committee summaries, first up is Policy Committee. So we did move back down to the, the one committee meeting per month. So we spent some time looking at the student discipline. We kind of got an update for the working group that has been doing it. And the working group had met four times. I think at this point now, they might be at five. And they've broken off at teams to really work on different aspects of the policy and kind of bring it together. And so they've taken MSBA's model policy and, as Superintendent McDowell had said to the Policy Committee, they're making it feel more positive than punitive and also more deliberative in the verbiage that's used. So they're looking at kind of a matrix of disciplinary options and with different examples from other districts. And so this should come forward to the Policy Committee, their draft next week. Hopefully, I see Superintendent McDowell nodding his head. And so we should be able to start looking at that then as a whole board next month, which will be great. And I think we'll have a lot of really good discussions about that. So we did just also look briefly at the graduation requirements, Policy 430, as well as the kindergarten age policy, which is 503.2. And so both of these, we're going to wait, as we've said before, for the strategic planning to kind of happen. And we're also going to, we really need to talk about this as a board and have that discussion. But Jen Reichel did go through and adjust or make comments on MSBA's policy for graduation requirements, so that we do have all of that information since she's transitioning out. And we can have that feedback for us as we're ready to take on, take on those discussions. And then last was the equity policy, which, as we mentioned at the work session a couple of weeks ago, we really tried to incorporate all of the feedback that we've continued to get from board members. And we brought it forward tonight for the third reading. So are there any questions for the Policy Committee? Or anything you'd like us to just kind of keep on the back burner as we continue chugging along? Not seeing anything. So then we will move into finance.
All right, I'm waiting for Jen Subert to magically appear again. How could we, oh, there she is.
I didn't know if you wanted me to do this one or Scott. But I can definitely.
Sorry, I didn't know. I'll let you two find it out.
Oh, go right ahead, please. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a finance committee, May 6th. Talked a little bit about, you know, some space considerations that we had. So related to pre-K, just kind of confirmed that we weren't looking for additional space for that. Talked about the ALC and really that we are kind of working through a process to determine, you know, what space needs they have, what open facilities we have, or what else would be available in the community. So that one, we're really just kind of working through it. We did talk a little bit about, you know, the district office discussion, and I'll let Lisa cover that in the facilities one, but that was also in the finance. And then as far as budget updates, so tonight, later in the, on the agenda will be a motion to approve the 2020-21 revised number two budget. So there were some items that really just kind of based on being in COVID and things being a little bit different, that we had some savings. So I updated the budget to incorporate those. And I'll cover those more in detail later on when we get to that budget approval. But there'll be a savings there. We also looked at the Fund II and Fund IV budgets again. When we go through that budget later on, I'll cover those in more detail. The 21-22 adopted budget, at this point, we're kind of looking at expenditures greater than revenues by about 600,000. We're kind of getting to that point where we're getting final numbers on some things. So that's probably not exact. But that will come for approval in June. And then we're still working on our transportation contract that's expiring here in June. So we'll need a new contract for next year. That has not been settled yet. And then we did look at the budget reductions. So initially, we had anticipated that we did reductions in the amount of about 1.7 million. And, you know, for the majority of those, they've held true. There's still a few that we're kind of working on and to see how they're going to work out. So we're close on those. But there have been a few updates or a few changes. And then, and we talked about the SR2 and SR3 funding that we're receiving. So SR2 is about a million three. And those funds can be used through September 30th of 2023. And then the SR3 is almost $3 million. And those can be used through September 30th of 2024. With those SR3, there are some required set-asides. So 20% has to be spent on activities that address learning loss. So we're kind of working through what those expenses will be. We talked through a guiding change document just to make sure that as we were evaluating potential expenses, that we were always going back and making sure that they aligned with the guiding change document. In addition, we're getting some summer school funding that is new this year. So it kind of breaks down by, you know, high school, middle school, and elementary. But, you know, the high school's getting about 80,000, middle school about 32,000, and elementary about 66,000. But all of that is based on estimated number of kids that will be attending. So at this point, you know, those should be close, but we're not done with registration. And then just talked through the levy, when, you know, when and how we want to start that process, you know, it sounds like we'll work with a consultant that'll help us do a survey that will help us determine, you know, when we would go out for that next levy and the amount. So just trying to kind of get a plan in place related to that. And then the last thing that we talked through was just some of the pending legislative action related to school district funding. And at this point, it, you know, the budget targets have been announced, but nothing more detailed than that.
Thank you. Do you have any questions about anything from the Finance Committee? Lisa?
Okay, just because timing is really terrible, I'm now going to have to leave the meeting for a minute to go to the senior parent thing for baseball. So I don't know if Bob can go through. I'll get back in as quick as I can for facility. But sorry. I'm going to pause out.
Okay, enjoy senior night. All right. So any questions regarding Finance Committee? All right. Then we will move on to Community Engagement.
So the Community Engagement Committee met on May 6th. And if you look at the sheet, there, we had a lot of committee members or there's a lot of individuals on the, on the team to represent the different, you know, community members that we serve, the business owners, local government, local nonprofits, and special demographic representatives. Very diverse group that represent the pockets within our community. And we had a great discussion about what this committee actually is, what we envision it to be, which is to be a, to build connections within the community and the district. To, we, we anticipate this being a very fluid and an adaptable committee to meet the needs of the committee or community. And we're, we're really trying to push collaboration with these opportunities that we have as a community to connect by sharing our experiences, becoming more transparent in our operations, which is, you know, a big part of our mission for this committee, and then focusing on building a stronger, more united committee. We, we did a lot of, and we focused a lot on introductions. So we had everybody introduce themselves, who they represent within the community and why they decided to join the committee. So that took up a lot of our time. But then Kelsey was able to provide some insight about how this committee is important to the strategic planning process that we're going through as a district. And then stressing the importance of community flexibility and, or committee flexibility in introducing options for community feedback that would play into the strategic, strategic plan. Dr. McDowell had previously mentioned that a survey is going out to the, to the community. That's where this is coming from. So we, we did provide a few options to either do this very quick values survey, or, you know, doing the start-stop-and-improve model and then coming back, you know, where we go out and ask community members, you know, what does, what can the district start? What can they stop? What can we stop? What can we improve? And then coming back at our next meeting to discuss that feedback, the, the community or the committee collectively decided to go with the quick values survey. And it'll, it'll essentially go over, okay, what does our, what do our community members value and what don't they value about how we contribute to the community? So that, that is, that's what we're working on right now. And then we, it does say in the notes here that we're planning on coming back before, or meeting again before June 1st. That's just not going to work. So we're looking at either the second or third week in June to, for our next Community Engagement Committee meeting. That's all I have. Depending on your questions, of course.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a pretty new committee. So if anyone has any questions, Stephanie is, is doing a great job. And Becky, yeah, just really getting us started. So. All right, I am not seeing any. So we can go into the Facility Committee meeting for summary.
All right. And I will do my best to capture this. And if I miss something, I'm sure Jen will pop on and/or Dave or someone will let me know. But the committee met as well, and really where we are is talking about what's left in our contingency for our bond funding. That's really the, the primary focus right now as we're coming in on narrowing down the final projects of what those bond dollars are spent for. And so you'll see in the first couple paragraphs of that document that we went into the committee meeting thinking we were about $900,000 over. But what we discovered is that we had some planning that had already gone into allocating dollars into projects. And so we had already had some funds in there. So we're actually in a really good spot with our contingency funding right now. I'm sitting, going into the meeting and right around $5 million, which is great. However, what we are learning is that, and this is no surprise, is that marketplace dollars right now are, are at a premium when it comes to construction. And so there, so our bids are coming in higher than what they, we would have seen a year ago, which is not unique to us. It's the way it is everywhere. It really depends upon what the scope of the project is and the materials that are needed for that project. However, the, kind of the highlights of the meeting was the committee giving guidance on things that we should be moving forward with, which is, as you'll see in the document, I'll just read them so that it's, because we have an audience of folks here. But the Tilden Bathroom Piping and Gym Floor Abatement, that's going to be done with LTFM dollars. And so we're redoing our LTFM project scheduling, and that'll be presented to the board at next month's meeting, is the 10-year, readjusted 10-month plan, or 10-year plan for LTFM. We have secure entrance projects, so that includes the media center modifications accommodating school board meetings, district office update, that part that isn't available for LTFM, which at this point, we have carpeting that is, we have the high school tennis courts, we have the middle school storage building. We have privacy improvements for the high school PE locker rooms and two toilet areas. But those, the committee felt we needed to put some parameters around, limiting those to a little over 1.2 million. And then privacy improvements to one bathroom at the middle school, again, with some parameters around that being a little under 400,000, so about 362. Right now, what ended up happening, as was alluded to, the initial, the initial core sampling came back at that middle school track project, and the price of doing that based on the need of recommended under or a ground level reconstruction that would go underneath the track, came back just under a million dollars. And so way outside the scope of, of what the original plan was, which was around 350, $450,000. So we need to do some work to relook at what we want to do there, which there are some other options that are being explored, but that, that isn't going to be taken up by the Facilities Committee at this point. And no further design work for the athletic room. Privacy improvements, again, that project over-doubled in its cost when the numbers came back. And so that's going to need to kind of go back to the drawing board and get some more information. The baseball field, we're really trying to figure out exactly what needs to be done there. And so they're collecting more and more data before we would be ready as a committee to bring anything to the board. And then, like was alluded to, we're working on some alternatives for the ALC team. We've met with them twice. And we're working to come up with what would some options be that we can gain some space to bring more kids back into our ALC? As well as potentially not having leased space and looking at some of our spaces internally for that. But we have not made a recommendation for that yet. Other topics that are, that are covered in the document are just bidding updates on valve replacements and tennis courts. We've got construction updates that were given of where we are with the current middle school projects and then the projects that are being closed out as we move through, move through all of the facility projects closing out for this year and then starting up for the summer. The next meeting is scheduled for the 25th of June.
Do you have a number on the committee available for any questions? Not seeing any on this one either. So last up then is the Insurance Committee.
And I think Kathy's going to jump on quick to provide an update. There she is.
Good evening. To give you just an update, we had our last Insurance Committee meeting of the year in May on our medical. We did see a bit of a spike in our claims the last couple of months. During our first 10 months of our plan year, our to-date spend though overall is down 8%. We are at levels that our claims that our members were at about in 2018. So the pandemic has had some positive impacts on our insurance plan. We do anticipate to see claims start to go up now with the pandemic starting to improve and people starting to reschedule procedures that they may. But overall, we've had an increase in our reserve about, of about a million dollars this year. On dental, our dental reserve has continued to increase this year with our open enrollment that we just completed. We did make a couple of changes to our plan design. That will potentially impact our plan with some increased costs, but we do anticipate that even with those changes, our reserve will continue to build just a little bit less than it would have. With open enrollment, we wrapped up open enrollment at the end of April midnight on May 2nd was our last day. The open enrollment went very well. And we are continuing to work. We have the Pharmacy Benefits Manager that we are rolling out on July 1st. So we have been doing meeting every other week with that Pharmacy Benefits Management Company, going through claims and making sure we know where everything's, are covered with our employees, working on communications, so that we know there's clear communications going out on the different areas and providing them information about the new resources and tools and things that are going to be available to them under that plan. So that was our last meeting, as I said, for May. We do not meet again until October now. I'd be happy to answer questions you might have.
Great. Does anyone have any question? Great. Does anyone have any question? Not seeing any here. Really, I was looking for Scott.
Got nothing.
Nope.
That was.
Getting good, figuring out who asks questions with which committee.
We've tried to let go.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update. All right. So with that, we will move into our action items. And so first up is the consent agenda. And again, for people watching at home, the consent agenda can be found on Board Book and you can read all of the different items within it. So do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Items for individual action. First up is the face mask policy. And so we had put this in last year, policy 808 with the executive order, but we no longer require the face mask policy. So this is in order to rescind this. So do we have a motion to rescind? Is that what I'm looking for or approve the rescinding?
Descending, yes. I will happily make that motion to approve the rescinding of the face mask policy.
I assume that's affected what it been to the school year?
Second.
Effect, yeah.
Why?
Yep, with the executive order, it states that it's until the school year ends, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, did we get a second? So yes, we did. Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the rescinding of this policy?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, next up is the revised number two budget.
I can just kind of cover the highlights really quickly, so. On this page, it'll show the changes that were made to the budget and they're all expenditure reductions. So for 2021, the Oasis program was not offered. So that was a savings of about $90,000. We had a Title I aid position that was open that we were unable to fill. So again, a savings of about 19,000. Our Title I admin chargeback was able to change, so it saves the district about 6,200. Our safe schools expenditures reduced and that really was related to the school liaison officer for the times that we were either in hybrid or distance learning, the work that they did was different, so they reduced their bill. We also had some crossing guard reduction. So again, if we were in hybrid or distance learning and then again with some open positions that we just weren't able to fill. We had some paraprofessional open positions that we had anticipated for this year, but then at the beginning of the year made the choice not to fill them, just knowing that the learning model was going to be different. Teacher substitutes about 200,000, so some teacher substitutes, if they were out related to COVID, we were able to use other funding sources. But then there were a lot of times we just weren't getting substitutes. Internal teachers were filling in. Utilities, there was a reduction of about 59,000. And then due to the increase in students attending non-publics, we allocate part of a counselor to that, so that chargeback changed by about 3,900. So all of those were savings to the district totals about 641,000. So when we look at, you know, this overall page for the general fund, we were overspending by about 17,000, but the unassigned is actually we're adding to the reserve by about 300,000. So it puts the budget much closer to being in balance for this year. And then we did make changes to fund two. So fun to, you know, started with a fund balance of about 700,000 and at the end of this year, we're anticipating it's going to decrease down to about 428,000. And this year was really a hard year for food service. When we were in hybrid, you know, we're only serving half the kids. We had, you know, the Wednesday flex days that affected the number of meals, the transition days and then just, you know, kids needing to quarantine. Along with that, you know, at the secondary buildings, the à la carte is usually a revenue generator. And this year we did very little à la carte. Our food costs were going up and then the amount of prep time and just additional supplies that that went into preparing those meals this year was was big. So ending the year with a $428,000 fund balance will be fine. Last fiscal year, they had actually increased their fund balance quite a bit, so food service will still be in a good position. For community service, they also had some, you know, they'll go down in fund balance by about 419,000. So they started the year at 658. It's projected they'll end in about the 240,000 range. And for them, you know, it again ties back to COVID, so the early childhood guidance required that kids were in groups of 10 or less. So the staffing ratios were still, you know, the staff still was high, but we had to break them down into smaller groups of kids. The enrollment in those programs was also down this year for school age childcare. We had to offer free emergent or free care to emergency worker to their kids. And then with the hybrid days and the transition days, all those days we were offering childcare usually free of charge. And then the enrichment rec and youth development, all of their programming was canceled for last summer. So just not generating that revenue and the same thing with mini tours. So many tours, there was, you know, no tour this year. So that one, you know, we talked about it a little bit in the facility or in the finance committee meeting. We may need to apply some S or dollars to help their fund balance because that 240,000 is pretty low for community ed. It's lower than where we would want to be. So that's all I have for the budget. If I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, feel free to jump in. Oh, there we go. Now I can see. Thank you, Jen. Yeah, thank you for the update on the budget. Right now I'm not seeing any questions for anyone from anyone. All right, it seems like we're good. So thank you very much, Jen. All right, ISD 97. Oh, we have to approve it. Sorry. Yep, yes, we do. We do. Do we have a motion to approve the revised?
So move second.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the revised budget, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Now we can move on to the ISD 917 LTFM.
And for that one, as a member of independent school district 917, each year we are part of their levy for LTFM. This year, our portion is $9,756. It's a little bit higher than usual and they're doing an HVAC replacement project that's $100,000, but it's split between all their member districts.
All right, so do we have any questions about this one, Stephanie?
No, no question. I just know we, it looks like we have a resolution for this one, right?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll wait for for questions and then I can read the resolution.
Wait, I am not, Dave?
I'll move the motion.
All right, I don't see any questions. So Stephanie, if you want to go through the resolution?
Great. Pursuant to do call and notice thereof, a school board meeting of independent school district 200 state of Minnesota was held on May 26, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM for the purpose and part of approving the intermediate school district number 917's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of, sorry, my screen is really small, so I'm trying to read this, of intermediate school districts, long-term facility maintenance projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance. Member Dave Pembell introduced the following resolution and moved for moved its adoption resolution approving intermediate school district number 917's long-term facility maintenance program budget and authorizing the inclusion of the proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facilities facility maintenance revenue, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district 200 state of Minnesota as follows. One, the school board of inner intermediate school district 917 has approved a long-term facility maintenance program budget for its facilities is for 2022, 2023 school year in the amount of 127,865 of which our district number 200 proportionate share is 9,765 and 10 cents. Correction, 9,756 and 10 cents. The various components of this program budget are attached as exhibit A here too and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved, exhibit A. Number two, Minnesota statute section 123B.57 subdivision 1 as amended, provide provides that if intermediate school districts long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school districts, member school districts, each member district may include its proportionate share of the costs of the intermediate school district program in its long-term facility maintenance revenue application. Now, number three, the proportionate share of the costs of the intermediate school districts long-term facility maintenance program for each member school district to be included in its application shall be determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district long-term facility maintenance program times a formula that weighs two components equally between the member districts total net tax capacity and adjusted marginal cost pupil units. The long-term facility maintenance cost shall be funded through in annual levy instead of issuing bonds. The inclusion of this proportionate share in the district's long-term facility maintenance revenue application for fiscal year 2023 is hereby approved, subject to approval by the commissioner of education. And number four, upon receipt of the proportionate share of long-term facility maintenance revenue attributable to intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the intermediate school district that applicable aid or levy proceeds. The motion of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by, can I get a second? I don't think we received one yet.
Second.
Is that Lisa?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. And upon vote being taken there on the following voted in favor and I will do a roll call vote. Becky Beisel.
Yes.
Brian Davis.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yeah.
Lisa Hidie.
Yes.
Stephanie Mom, yes. Dave Pembell.
Yes.
Kelsey Waits.
Yes.
And nobody voted against, whereupon said resolution is declared duly passed and adopted.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
As a side note there, 917 is going to be doing some long-range improvements on havoc systems to a number of the buildings, so that will be reoccurring in the years ahead.
All right, thank you for that update. Your heads up. All right, our next item for action is the property and liability workers' comp.
I can give just a really quick summary on this one too. So for the property and liability insurance, it's about a 15% increase from this current year. The main factors for that are, you know, a continued difficult insurance market. There were larger increases in the cost for the excess property and cyber liability insurance. And then as part of this missed program, there's an actuarial debit credit system that each year looks at each district and their claims for the last five years. So we actually received a debit this year of about 15% based on some recent claims that we had. And then there were a few coverage enhancements, so increased coverage in that plan. For the the equity, so part of the miss program, each district earns equity in that program. Hastings has approximately 89,000 in equity, which is just money that we'll start seeing a return on in 2022 and then each year going forward. So it'll it'll be smaller amounts each year, but right now that's our total equity that we've built in the program. And then for workers' comp, there's an overall decrease of almost 5%. And with that one, the main contributing factors were an overall projected wages were being decreased due to the budget reductions. We had a slight increase in the experience mod, so we went from a point two or a point nine two to a point nine four. And with that, the agency fee that we paid to Maguire stays the same, so no change there.
Okay, do we have any questions for Jen about this item? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Okay, any discussion? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. Now we have the additional bond projects, which superintendent McDowell had touched on with the facility summary.
Yeah, so I can just lead back into it again. You'll see in the documents that we have five projects. The first of which is the high school privacy improvements. We have that middle school privacy improvements, district office renovations, boardroom improvements and the district-wide entrance security improvements. All of these are topics that were discussed at length at the facilities committee meeting and have been decided upon to be brought forward to the board to make it to approve in the amounts of that are listed there. So we're looking at looking at doing, providing additional funds for a revised layout of toilets and the PE lockers. That's been in process now for a while. I believe that was beginning its discussion when I first came on board about a year ago. In terms of the layout there, we're finally ready for that one. The additional funds for the same type of layout discussion or implementation rather of toilets that increases safety and supervision at the middle school. At the district office, we've talked about this a couple of times where we need to replace the carpet at the district office. That can take place out of LTFM dollars. But what happens there is we also have to lift those workstations and replace those workstations to which we did do due diligence and figure out whether or not we could come up with any type of a used situation and the reality there is it doesn't really work that well when we're trying to match configurations to what we need out there. So while we looked at it, we do think we're going to get a best, our best deal in terms of finding a low-cost solution for.
in terms of finding a low-cost solution for what we need to do there. But then we're also going to plan to upgrade the lighting to LED like we've done in the other buildings and such. So we are also then including the technology upgrades that are needed for the relocating the boardroom from district office over to the middle school. And then finally, we've gone around with old and looked at all of our entrances and we talked about this a little bit as well. But we currently have some variances in our security doors for the actual entrance to every building. And so this is the door and security upgrade for every vestibule in the district for every one of our buildings. With that, you know, I guess we'll take questions. We've got Jen is on, Cam's on. If there are any questions, we have the facility committee members here as well.
Does anyone have any questions about these projects? I'm not seeing any. So I guess with that, do we have a motion to approve the projects?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose same sign. All right. Motion carries. Last up on our action items is the policy one hundred equity and diversity. So do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. All right. Motion carries. So last up is our future meeting dates. So you'll see we have policy committee next week. And so the big discussion there is going to be the behavior policy or discipline policy, I apologize. Work sessions on the ninth and the sixteenth to be working on strategic planning. Regular board meeting on June twenty-third. And then facility committee on the twenty-fifth. So that's it. And I just I hope everyone's enjoying this beautiful weather that we have have going on. And if anyone has anything else that they want to add tonight, otherwise we can take a motion to adjourn.
I just have one completely off topic question, and this is with the bleachers that were damaged at Todd Field. What is the timeline for getting those repaired slash replaced? I saw that they're covered with some with some banners in prep for the graduation ceremony we're going to have there.
Yeah, that's going to be quite a while with that one because what we learned way back is that the to replace those bleachers and do it in a manner that would provide the safety right at the the road level, we would need to come up with some type of a pylon system, which happens to be right where we have the easement. And so at this point, we decided it was safest to just not allow people to sit there because it's going to be a couple of years, as odd as that sounds, before the Department of Transportation is going to be reevaluating that easement right there on fifty-five. So maybe something will change as we move through it, but right now we're in a holding pattern. And so we we fenced that whole area off, took out everything that looked like it was broken and then purchased those giant covers that are what the professional stadiums use to cover seats and should have a banner on it or a logo on it for us as well. So that's the solution in the short term until we can figure out how not to spend money that unfortunately could get ripped right back up if the Department of Transportation didn't like what we did.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I get asked about that every now and again. So thanks. Thanks very much.
I'm sure we'll get asked about that a lot after graduation on Todd Field. Everyone, everyone's going to be wondering. So it's good to have that information. So thank you. So I guess that's it. So motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Aye. So meeting is adjourned. Enjoy baseball.
And Mexico.
And Mexico.